Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
9th of July, yes. For council, do we have any body's swabs? Do you accept this?
Yes.
And then what decorations interest? Okay, sorry, I should have said the second one. So next question is to agree, correct record of the meeting of your subject meeting. We put out a meeting held on 12th of May. That's the second one.
Oh, it's all right, correct.
Okay. We need second. And that's where it all been. And will those in favour?
I can't because I wasn't here.
That's definitely a problem.
I did, well, I don't know.
Please to put her hand up first. It was just that it was time, time.
There's a lot of smoke that had to go through the bush. Fine.
Give John a next one.
Okay, next one, intermate minutes, interim report council. The portrait of April. Did we agree measure, correct?
Yeah.
Agree, but those of us who are here.
Yeah.
Great, great.
Great, great.
Minutes of planning committee, 24th February, 24th March and the 9th of May. So if you don't have anybody who's chair or vice chair that's finally received now, would anybody like to propose that we agree those?
I propose against.
Okay, so the first by council, search three, second by five, thanks to Mahi. And lives in favour?
I wasn't here for all of them.
Town centre and grants committee. This was the 10th of February, the 31st of March.
Send the minutes of the town centre events committee to know previous topics circulated and those that we know.
Yep, checking up. Okay, well, those in favour? Thank you. Environment Committee, some super minutes in the borough, because I'm having a set for April. I propose that we accept those minutes. Those in favour?
Minor point of order.
Sorry.
I think we only have to receive those minutes, we don't need to agree them.
Yeah, okay. And then we've got a recommendation from the environment committee, which is on page 534. And we're going to the bottom part, footbridge, we're moving agenda. And would you like to speak? I mean, that's a total. Council wishing was debated in detail by the environment committee and this is their recommendation. Yeah. Counselor Sturridge.
Yeah, this has gone on for a very, very long time. Happy to agree the recommendation. I've agreed the recommendation because the bridge has basically had its day. And it's gone through all the scrutiny of the committee as, but it's just endlessly. And we need to now get on and actually take the action which is needed.
Thanks, Shaita.
Just going to second that.
Thank you very much. And anybody else wish to speak on that, all those in favour then? Accepting your recommendation. That's issue now, we'll say very much.
Point of order, point of order left. Given that this is subject to consultation. Are we, I mean, the actual removal of the, of the path?
No, no, this is removal of the bridge, which is a separate thing. Although it's linked, it's a, it's still a separate thing to the, the removal path.
True.
The consultation that's currently going on is over the moving of the right way. Which goes over that bridge. The bridge is beyond reasonable repair. Beyond deconoming repair. And we've made the decision to remove that bridge. And just to clarify, the decision, the committee have already agreed to remove the bridge, this is just the tender.
I mean, we can't move the beach until the footpath is re-scheduled. Come on. We have to wait until the footpath formally is moved to be at the bridge.
But this is for the tender.
Yeah, 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 I know that, but we. One of the comments on, on search media today was, it's a consultation, just a done, you know, it's a done deal. And I just think if we were agreeing to remove the bridge, but it's got to be subject to.
We can't, it can't, this can't be subject to this tender for it, which we agreed in the environment committee. To agree to this particular company and it's been this ratification of that tender process by full council.
Okay, well, we want to see what work.
We need to, we need to work for the right way.
Yeah.
To, to be sorted, but the council have agreed that, that the plan is to have that life bring. Yeah. And that has been ongoing. Since the initial decision to remove the bridge, which I believe is in November 2020. And counsel such free.
Yeah, I think it would have been a lot easier if that which accounts of broad modification or long earlier. The, I know that from my correspondents, they were well aware of the fact that there was going to be changes on the bridge. I know from my correspondents, they were well aware that it is not, it's, and the timing of it isn't helpful. But the financial decision, as I said, is an important decision. We can't delay on that financial decision. And there is another bridge 20 yards away from it. And I walked under that bridge, unlike most people at this table. And I can assure you, it is rot and tear. Because I can look at it from underneath in the middle. And it's constructed different to the other bridge. And, and we won't be making any, no one will be losing through this. And then make a discussion, yeah.
Thank you, counsel.
So I think, would you please do it?
We're just hanging on with her. So for that, the item on the agenda is to agree to, all council to agree to the tender. The agreement for the rest of it has gone through long ago. And I think we just all voted on that to agree to the tender. Okay, so we'll move on then. Thank you, to item eight, which is resources committee to receive the mental resource committee.
I'm happy to present these and there's two recommendations. One of them is the purchasing and procurement policy. And the other is recommended to full council for the committee calendar 2026. So if may you want to take them separately.
We'll, we'll take, first of all, we'll take the purchasing, procurement policy.
So I suppose.
So council.
Yeah, no, you go ahead.
Yeah, council, I don't need the person that we accept it, council, Shaita.
I would second that, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody wish to speak? All those in favour? And that is unanimous, I believe. And then the second recommendation is the full council committee count, calendar for 2026.
It depends on.
Counselor, Donnie, opposing, council, Mahi, seconding, those in favour? Thank you very much, and unanimous again. And. Item nine, to receive recommendation from communication strategies committee. But the full council approved the amendments to line 14 1.5 of the meeting for policy. Where possible, press releases will be given to quakes from the mayor, a breakaway committee chair or council, non-mated by committee. Which is a plenty to see on the agenda, but council search free.
I'm very happy to agree this because it, it always seems most bizarre to me when you're doing an event and someone's led on it. But they don't get to talk about the work that they've done. And I say this as chair, I sent revenge at some time. It seems only right that other people get the credit for things they do. And I think the committee have always had that view. This now regularizes that and allows people to be able to do that within, within the process of the council. And it's just for the committee to agree that many things won't be done like that. But in these cases where people do work and they should get credit for it. So I'm very pleased to oppose, we accept it.
Second, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? And we'll go to the votes on it, all those in favour? And that is unanimous again, thank you very much. And item 10, to receive recommendations from equality community and diversity. Equality, community, diversity, inclusion, working group, meeting held on 26th of June. And 10.1, terms of reference recommended for council for review and agreements unchanged. Of course.
Second it.
All those in favour? Thank you very much. And then 10.2, the working group request £40 from their budget from refreshments to be served at a Black History Month event. Plus £20 to hire display, display boards and rocking library throughout October. That's where I don't think.
And do we not have display boards? Because when we, when we do like our, our own table, do we not have them?
So it's, it's, it's using the space within the library, I believe they charge us £5 a week.
Yeah, so we've got no choice but to hire their notice boards.
Well, it's not hiring, it's hiring the space, such.
Okay, it says here, display boards, £20 for display boards, doesn't say for the space.
Is to use their display boards, yeah. They're, they're into the library.
Yeah.
And. Counselor Harvey.
Yeah, it's their display boards, they're attached to the wall. So the display board is on the wall. So put on, to hide that space of the display boards that are attached to the wall. They charge £20. So it's not freestanding ones. Those, those are going in the window.
I got that.
Yeah.
Thanks, Shaita.
I'm happy to propose that we accept the recommendation, the request.
Thanks, search free.
I'm happy to second it.
Excellent, thank you very much. All those in favour? And again, no, that's, that's. Okay, there's against. And there's abstaining. So that's one extension. Thank you. And. Right, item 11, bank signatories, four living banks, signatories, account for things. Counselor Draper, counselor Jane, Lord Joe, Lord you, counselor Adonkey, counselor Sturridge. And to agree inside the schedule, which is appendix E. That's just such free.
Should move quickly and agree it.
Second left, second.
Okay, all those in favour? That is unanimous, thank you. And then, number two, for me, the CCLA signatories are council Davis, council Mahi. As was Claire Mollin.
I would agree.
Thank you very much, counselor Draper. That's such a second.
Second it.
Okay, all those in favour? Thank you very much. Item 12, committees, council Roger Newell and council Russell Poppy. To bring council news, Roger Newell's request to begin a member of the plan committee. The environment committee and the neighbour plan working group.
Agreed.
I would be great.
Counselor Draper.
I'm second.
All those in favour? But you're very right, yes, you can favour yourself.
Yeah.
And top of the two, to agree, council Poppy, to press to remember the town centre events committee and the environment committee. That's such.
I agree, welcome aboard.
Second.
All those in favour? Thank you very much. And item 30, animation from plant councillor Haydock. Councils should wear badges at local, local events or identify public. It's suggested by councillor Allen, at 148.50 plus host and packing. With current council badges are expensive and may not provide very familiar to our local community, for our community. Therefore, we should seek alternatives at a more reasonable price. New councillors will bring replacement badges, would you like to speak from that, councillor Haydock?
I think it's all written there, but some members will remember the exchange by email where everybody was going on Amazon and trying to work out some alternatives for themselves. And it just seemed, it would make sense for the town clerk and team to look and see whether we actually could save some significant money and still get a reasonable looking badge for it.
Thank you. Thanks, my Donnie here.
Thank you. And when the email exchange was going on, I had a recollection of the lady councillor Derek Iceham. He used to wear a badge that he had picked up from a training event. And it was just, just, you know, normal training event badge. And when people asked him, why do you wear that? He said, because nobody can read that one there. And they can read this one. And it just makes total sense if you're a woman to have somebody look there. And also t-shirts with pins and stuff, yeah, I'm all for this. I would second it.
Counselor, Draper.
Yeah, I completely agree that, you know, it's important that we have badges that we can be identified by members of the community, especially when we're at events and stuff. But it would be great if they could identify us without having to stand six inches away for a guy like that. So if they could be done at a better value. The only thing, I don't know if, if motion does get agreed, if possibly Park could look also potentially like smaller businesses or more local businesses, rather than kind of going for something like Amazon or something that's produced quite a long way away.
Thank you.
I, I think we covered for a new procurement policy because I think procurement are part of that.
Okay, so council steps free. Yeah, I would say I found out today that we've discussed with the current supplier, why we haven't put an offer in yet. And they've said that they can bring the price down for us of order up to £5 to £82.50. Thank you. And I've got, council such free, then councillor Harvey, and then council try.
Actually, I thank the council for going into how much they cost. I didn't know how much they cost because one's had it on his jacket for a while now. So, and they do seem to.
Turn six.
Yeah. No doubt, I think mine was three definitely, but there's that sort of a mess in theory and I don't think it was. But so I am shocked at how much they cost. And I don't recall there at all them being anything as much as that. I do feel there is a, should be inequality between all of us in, in badges. But I don't think we should throw away the ones that we've got. Mainly because I've got a hole in my jacket now and I don't want to make another one. And, but I do think it is, and there is another thing that people seem to do now, and I don't know if it's appropriate for us, is lanyards. People seem to have these lanyards now and I keep getting, I don't ever wear them, I keep getting given them.
What they're at cash.
And so I think it'd be worth looking at because it is important that when people are representing the town council, they are recognised for doing so. And it's not, it's the most important thing actually, so you can engage what was mentioned.
And councillor Harvey.
Yeah, my very next feeling is about, about this matter. Some of it derives from the fact that we have two tiers of councillors. Those with the old badges and those with new badges, and I'm uncomfortable with that. Unless we're going to say we're going to get new badges for everyone. I'm not happy with the wording which says councillors should wear badges. I don't think, I don't think councillors are required to do anything. Myth wear badges or can wear badges are encouraged to wear badges, but don't act should. Because that doesn't feel right for a council to be commanded to do something. And I just, I don't know, I mean, if not price down to nearly half of what the original cost was, which I think is quite interesting. So I'm not really in support of this, I think we should stick with what we've got. And if people want to have lanyards with names on, in all we possible to have, make that happen with negligible. Money, just a bit of plastic and a, and a card inserted, that's very easily done. And indeed councillor Iceham, as we know, used to do it in his own, in his own way. So I think on total, I'm not in favour of this. I think we can, given that maybe not the price down to £20 or whatever the price was in the town park approach. But I'd be inclined to stick with what we've got, the current supplier. And everyone then has the same badges, rather than the old badges for the councils, we know in good years. And new badges that look a little bit cheaper for the newer councillors, that just doesn't feel right to me.
Thank you, councillor Harvey and Charlie.
Thank you very much. In a way, I, I feel the same as well as councillor Harvey. But we are looking into this to see if the wording can be clearer on the badge. So irrespective whether they now come down in price, maybe a clearer badge would be better, even though we may have some of one sort, some of the others. But my original thought was that when buying badges and stationery and stuff, quite a lot of it is when you put your own logo on it. And then that puts the price up a bit. And I think we ought to keep that irrespective of the price. So I think that's something that I would like to propose that we keep on whatever badge we have at whatever price. So that the town clerk's got some guidelines to go forward on.
Thank you, and I'll come back to you at the end, that's the right head up. My, my.
Just to highlight again that the clerk did say that they would only come down on the price if we bought five badges. And five times eighty two, I think comes pretty close to two times 150. It's not that far off. So actually, they would still be making the same amount of money from us, but we would just be getting three badges that we didn't.
It wasn't to, under five that they would do at that price.
Oh, I thought you said.
We've bought it once.
Okay. And I think we go off to that side.
And.
Just a little bit of a question, how many new badges do we actually need?
Four.
Four.
My, my thoughts on it are, I hate lanyards. I absolutely agree that it is hard for people to read, read them. It is quite disconcerting when people lean in very close to you. There are some local suppliers that I, I looked up and found who can keep, keep your own logo on there. And they come in at a heck of a lot less than £80 per badge. We have to bear in mind that we are not spending our own money. We are spending looking at taxpayers' money in this.
First off, councillor Harvey mentioned, I probably shouldn't have said councillors should wear badges at events, apologies for that. Our encouragement team is perfectly fine as well. It was just a sort of introduction to the proposal and I don't think it really, it matters too much for the, for the gist of it. The other thing is, I don't think we have to decide today whether we're changing the badge or, or anything else. We just need to agree that we're going to ask the clerk to look at what the options are. And we can ask her to look at ones with clearer and larger writing on them as part of that. And then we'll be in position to know whether we want to just use the new one, whether we want to move to a new one at all. And if we do, whether it's just for replacements and new councillors, or whether everybody's going to get the bigger ones so that they're a bit clearer who they are.
Yeah, thank you. And so councillor Harvey, are you proposing an amendment to remove the word should and replace it with?
I think that.
Um, may wish to.
Yeah, may.
May wish to, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and that's a wrong, so all those in favour of that in the first place? So that is unanimous. And then I think we need to vote on the substantive motion then, which I'll propose at the moment. I'll let you propose it, Heather.
Yes.
I have a second, oh, you've already said it, all right, sorry. Okay, we'll get to the vote, sorry.
And what about my proposal of always keeping the logo?
We, we did, did say that we. I'm happy to say that, that's what I think.
Okay, thank you, it's great. And like.
Yeah. I'm quite involved.
Okay, so substantive motion, all those in favour? And that is you, no, no, it's not, although against. And so it's one against anybody abstaining. Okay, it's carried. So 13.1, should the proclamation be passed to us, town clerk, to research options at less than £20 per badge, less than £50 per badge, or less than £100 per badge? To bring to a future meeting. Are you looking for us to make a, a decision on those? Or would you bring three set foots? Cross this. It would be better, I can do more detail if you give me a steer as to what, what sort of price range you want me to look at. Because there's a lot of variation in them. So if you can give me your steer, do you want me to keep it just under 100, look down to less than 50? Or would you want me to look at less than 20? Okay, so that's a search for.
It would have something that looks like it's come out of a Crister's cracker. So the town council's been here longer than, a long time, so it's not big. Notes, I'd propose that I can gamble below £50. I'm sure we'll find something a lot cheaper, but I think below £100 because being with some platty tin top badge, which looks like it's come out of a children's cracker, so I don't really want that.
I agree.
Counselor Draper.
If that was a proposal, then I'm, sorry, yeah. That's a proposal, then I'd second that, under £50 for the budget.
Anybody else?
Just to say that I actually suggested below 100, below 50 in my original written email. I don't know where the below 20 is paid for, for that, that's seen very cheap.
That's it.
Okay, so we've got a proposal that we gave for about £50 for a badge. All those in favour? Or anybody against? Let's council Newell and council, no, there's seven, there's three against. And I thought that's carried. Okay, thank you. Next, item, item 14, motion from council Sturridge. Which council Sturridge has given us some details, which I hope that everybody's had a chance to look at. Regarding the questions he's been asking on this, council Sturridge.
Firstly, the purpose of the motion is to be, to give this town council opportunity to discuss the responses. And secondly, this town council did discuss this on several occasions after the last flooding events. And, and we did say that we would continue to look at this and we did say that we would continue to present. So the unfortunate thing is that the question of the 12th of December didn't make its way to the public domain till after the election, even though it was questioned before the purr period. So this information has only been made available since I lobbied on reelection. And I think there's some issues in there, which for a skip, for a start of the 10, the discussing around Midway. The ownership of the land, the, and the eons of it always seems to be somebody else's fault. And, and I thought that rather than, I can do my own stuff, but I think this is far too important for one person to have a view on. We're here to look after the wellbeing of all the residents. So I leave it, I pose the motion to discuss, and what views come out of it is the views of this council, not mine.
Listen, Draper.
So I have several issues with the response. First of all, the Buckingham flood action group doesn't exist, it's flood action for Buckingham. It would probably be quite good if they got their name right when talking about them, that might go down a little bit better. Secondly, I note that out of all of, I mean, it's a, it's a nice long document, but nowhere Buckinghamshire council really say that they're going to do anything.
Oh, my.
It's very much the environment agency are doing this, the environment agency are going to do this study and the environment agency are going to do this feasibility study. And the environment agency are going to follow up with these people and they're going to look into this scheme and they're going to liaise with the canal society. But bear in mind the Buckinghamshire. But bear in mind the Buckinghamshire flood, strategic flood department has grown considerably in staffing numbers. We don't actually know what any of them do. Because from what I've seen, they're not in North Bucks anyway. They do quite a lot in South Bucks, to be fair to them, where they get a few inches of flooding every now and again. They don't really do a lot up here. Um, and in addition to that, I remember from the Riparian walk around, which unfortunately I couldn't be on, but I was aware of the, um, so the actions that came from it. And one of the actions was the Environment Agency actually gave an enforcement notice to Buckinghamshire Council to clear some of the, um, overhanging branches and debris from behind Cecil's yard. Now, the Environment Agency runs the impression that that had been completed, because they were told that that had been completed. However, it hadn't, and we had both ways to prove that it hadn't. And actually, some volunteers from the community had to go and drag the dead wood and drag the trees out of the river to unblock it. So it's all very well and good they've said what everyone else is going to do. My question would be, what are Buckinghamshire council going to do?
Yeah, thank you. And I will counsel Roger Newham.
I'm looking at the flooding issues at Midway and the the water horse behind her is actually Otis Brook, because it comes behind Badgers where I live. And that is wholly owned by Buckinghamshire County Council, so they can't. Because when I was the governor at the school, we tried to get it cleared out. But their excuses that because the school, they're responsible for maintenance, they had to do that. And as anybody who's on along there, like I was in the hole in the, you know, it's a big one. The trees that are in the bank side of it, but are constantly falling over because they're not properly maintained. So the, the group is about that, so I feel like it, because the ground is bad. But when you ask them to come and clear the trim, it's, oh, that was, those trees, those are going to be burnt. So you don't think I'm asking a different person, even if it's the evidence that goes behind it, after a minute. So what we want is to get it done. And then, but the bit where the tractors were in the other way, that they were there, those trains are responsible to the education department, so they have to do that. So it'd be nice if we could respond to Buckinghamshire Council, saying you own all this, and it's your responsibility to maintain it, rather than pop it off another, other people. Thank you.
And councillor Harvey next?
When I read the, the document, it seemed to me there is some useful information in there. Um, and summarising the form that, for the first time, bringing things together. I was a little bit surprised that when I was working with the previous, um, uh, community board and managed to get a report out of them of what would happen to the previous section nineteen, um, study that was done back a few, a few years back. And then was told that I couldn't then make that report public. This would have been an ideal opportunity for them to include some of the information um, in, in that letter. So I think the letter, I think as we're discussing, is highly deficient. And maybe a little bit inaccurate, um, in some of its assertions. I think it does, it does demand a fulsome and well argued response from, well, from the town council, I think would be best. Informed by all the intelligence around the room, uh, whether, you know, where, where people know various things, as you just said, Ruffins on, um, and Lucy too. Um, and I think that's, if that's what this motion, I'm not clear what the motion is asking for, but I think if the motion is asking for there to be a fulsome report that maybe is prepared in collaboration between various councillors and officers, then I would wholeheartedly support that. Because I think the more that we can make the flooding issues clear out for everybody, because there's no mention, as we know, because we were here when Taryn gave us that presentation on the issue of the drainage, uh, from the top of, um, uh, Page Hill. Um, and where, and the fact that water doesn't run down by, run down the culvert on the bypass when it actually should, because there is some work that needs to be done at the top of Page Hill. And to direct the, uh, surface water away from, uh, from Linden, is where it ended up a few, few years ago. So there's a whole raft of things in here that need to be assembled and brought together. Uh, and, and I think we need to have a fulsome response to it. And if that's what the motion is proposing, then I'm a hundred percent behind that.
Thank you. Councillor Schaefer?
Yeah, so thank you for bringing this to this council, councillor Stutchbury. Um, I share the concern that there is very little that says this is what Buckinghamshire council, as the flood authority will do, even if it were just to say we will coordinate all the knowledge that there is and do X with it. So that is missing. The whole report and the discussion that we've had so far in this chamber shows again that unfortunately with the flooding, the responsibilities and ownerships are quite convoluted, which means that people or bodies are either genuinely unsure what they are responsible for and what they own, or they find it quite easy to say, well, this is another department, this is planning, so this needs to go to planning, this is highways, this needs to go to highways. Only this bit is environment, we can't do anything because it's, you get the gist. And so I think one part of that response from my, I don't think we are in a position to say what the response should be today, although I agree with councillor Harvey that one action come out here is indeed to devise a way by which we can uh, produce a considered response that brings together all the knowledge around the table and elsewhere in the town and the town council. But I think one element of this has to be that I would like to see a somebody developing a clearer understanding exactly what is whose responsibility. And for Buckinghamshire council saying, and these bits are indeed our responsibility and to take a lead in coordinating a response, and I do not see that happening at the moment.
Hi, the Councillor Draper?
Um, so I was just getting, um, a committee member to send me a copy of the section nineteen reports I'll forward down to you. John, because I don't know why you've been told that you can't disseminate publicly, because it's, um, but in addition to that, I was going to say, the thing is Buckinghamshire council should know what belongs to them. They've got drainage asset map. They've got land asset, they, they should know what areas they're in control of. Um, additionally, another issue which has been pervasive for years is that, um, uh, planned maintenance works aren't, uh, governed properly by Buckinghamshire council. So for example, and this has happened on numerous occasions. You've got Well Street waiting years and years to have their drains cleared. They finally, two days before, we get an email out saying, right, there's a, a parking restriction on Well Street because they're going to clear the drains. Fantastic, great news. Emailed it out to everyone that I knew, so it was, um, spread it out to people in the flood group so that they all knew, because obviously a lot of them live on Well Street. Um. Someone went out maybe two days before, put some cones out, didn't kind of put any notification why the no parking cones were there. And so what happened is when the contractors came to clear the drains, they managed to clean three out of eight drains, because there were cars parked over all the others. And despite me having raised this with, um, one of the guys, one of the officers from Buckinghamshire council and, uh, the, his counterpart in Balfour Beattie, um. And I said, you know, this is a significant concern, parking is at a premium on Well Street. And how are we going to make sure that people don't park there? I said, don't worry, we've got it all covered. And even if people are parked over the drains, they'll still be able to get around them, not a problem. Um, my issue is, and I, I emailed this, but I didn't get a response um, after, because I went down there and spoke to the guys, is has that been marked as completed? Have those works on Buckinghamshire county council schedule now been marked as completed? Will Balfour Beattie be charging us for them as complete? Or will the, will we need to be go, will they need to be revisited? And are we going to be charged again for that revisit, where if they'd have done things properly the first time round, it would have been cleared first time round?
Yeah.
Just to respond, I know the section nineteen report is on the net. It's, it's what I asked, to say there are several actions in this report. What's happened to the actions? Who's monitoring? Whether the actions have been followed up? They then wrote a report, which they sent to me, which said, this is what's happened to the actions, but you can't put that on the public domain. That's the report I'm talking about. And I went through freedom of information there, and they still say, no, we're waiting for some big cross-county mega report in the autumn before we can put the one that's particularly about Buckingham and Allo River Valley um, out into the public domain. I think it's a little, a little bit, yeah, I really don't get it. But that's, that's, I mean, I could go to the ICO, it's insane, but you know.
Is, is there not the phrase, um, sometimes it's better to ask, give me some permission?
No, I'm not prepared to, to, although it's not officially confidential in the way that, you know, the next part of the meeting is, I wouldn't want to do that.
Okay.
No. There are some, there are some bridges I think I need to cross, as it were. Some battles not worth fighting.
Okay. And I can appreciate that, that's just a few years. I'm, I'm wondering whether we need to look at how we're going to go forward with this and, um, and actually um, get members' thoughts and concerns um, into, into, um, uh, digestible format. Um, so I don't know, have you got any advice on that?
Well, the obvious thing would be to have a look on offline working group, get together and, um, fresh out of the idea.
Okay. Councillor Stutchbury?
Yeah, well, thank you, thank you for that, that. And the reason for putting it here was to do as much what's gone on today, which is people express their concerns, or I did go back to Cabinet Arts and Precipits around Maitre Street, meanwhile, that's on the website, and it was just as imprecise the response we got on that, about we're planning to do the works in Maitre Street, which has been waiting for four years. The family keep getting flooded. And meanwhile, we're looking at this, no ownership. I think, um, it's regrettable that the council takes this defensive role, which it's a defensive position they're taking, which is a legal defence against possible fault. The trouble with that is that in the end, um, that will come unstitched, won't it? So I, I think that if, the, the proposal that it goes forward to gather everybody's opinion um, around this and the issues that we all share and, 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 and find, that's going to be the clever way forward. And Roger's point about ownership, I'm aware of that, Roger, and I've told them that um, on about three occasions, but that didn't seem to register. Um, and it's quite interesting, one of the ward members who was, um, actually worked at the school at the time, um, and I think he was in charge of the management of the school finances at the time that they put through the senior op. So I think, um, selective amnesia seems to be where we are. And I do think the point made, um, about South Bucks and the point made about protecting information in the section nineteen agreement is a bit odd. We should all be here working together to try and find solutions. When people start hiding information, it builds a mistrust. And the point made by Lucy about not even getting the flood action group name right at the onset was quite a good point, because if that's how much diligent they're doing on Buckingham, not to get a group which has been corresponding with them constantly since their inception. Though I'm very happy that that goes forward. I think I'll carry on slowly digging away, um, at them separately. But I think it's only right that my purpose was to include everybody in this, and if that's going to be done, I think that's the right thing. Um, I can add into that, but I think, um, um, only as an addition. I don't want to be over, over levering on that, if you see what I mean. I want to be a support idiot, not a, not a driving force. I think that's where my position is.
Um, um, I just wanted to make the link between climate change and extreme weather events, because um, I've been looking at the data on extreme weather events in this area recently. And there are very much more high temperature days, but also five rainfall days, um, and higher rainfall than we've seen in the past. So I think we're already seeing the impacts of climate change locally. And if we're planning for the future and how to deal with flooding events in the future, then we need to be thinking about these things happening more and more often and on more extreme levels. So whatever decisions were taken in pre feasibility studies in two thousand and five and two thousand and eight may not be awfully relevant now.
Councillor, Councillor Schaefer?
Just briefly, I think I may have mentioned to the council before that I, uh, now sit on the, uh, Transport Environment, Climate Change and Communities Committee, it's quite a mouthful, it's, it's got to tech, which will give me, and I mentioned this at the meeting of the, uh, you know, that we had a couple of weeks ago, that, uh, that gives me another avenue to ask questions. So, uh, like councillor, I would echo what councillor Stutchbury just said, I'm very happy to contribute to a, um, to a document or to a discussion, but I think as a ward member, again, my, uh, um, role could also be, or, yeah, could, could be much better used to, uh, try and raise these questions at Buckinghamshire council, wherever there is a possibility to do so.
Okay, I'm going to propose that we, um, um, put forward an amendment, the councillor Stutchbury's motion, to add in at the, on the last line, um, members to form a working group to make, um, to discuss and make recommendations, um.
Do you respond?
Um, to, yeah, to, to respond to, um, this, this document from Buckinghamshire council. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm very happy to set the amendment. Just be aware that this last document took three years for them to do that response, so. So get excited about anything that happens instantly. That was three years of questioning to get that. So don't get excited, it is Buckinghamshire council. So we should get it by the time we stand for election again.
Okay, so the first part being seconded by Robin, so who, are those in favour of that amendment to, that's such information? That's unanimous, thank you. Um, and then I think to go on the substantive motion. And I think that if we can, um, circulate outside of this meeting, are any members, um, who wish to take part in the working group? Um, you look, you look, you can formally make the way to go forward that, rather than have to start on your whole another um, discussion on that. Um, so all those in favour of the motion? Obviously, it's posted, seconded first of all, yet whether the asset came, was it your seconded, seconded by councillor Draper? Most favour? And that's unanimous, thank you very much. That's very useful. Um, item fifteen, motion from councillor Harvey, um, councillor Harvey, which wants to speak on this.
Thank you, mate. Um, well, this was first brought to my attention by a former councillor, Mark Cole, who's probably in the newspaper or on the net, whatever. Um, and looking into it, it's of interest. Because what happened is a, the council in Lambeth did a consultation on no traffic neighbours, which, those who don't know, means they block up roads that are often used as ramp runs or shortcuts and so on. And if you follow the news and oxygen, they're very, very controversial. Um, and, uh, can create some of those problems and no solving, but that's another story. But what's of interest is that the council did a consultation and then promptly ignored the consultation because it didn't like the answer that came back, and went ahead and below track with their good scheme, anyway. Then obviously a group of people got together and took the council to, I think, to the High Court. And showed that actually you can't do a consultation in this if you then refuse to listen to the response from it. And the consequence, as you have read, um, is that the council would have been forced to think again about the scheme, because essentially it was found to be an unlawful decision, because they ignored the consultation. So that's an interesting bit of case work, and, and I think the, the phrase that was used is that it was a landmark legal ruling. So landmark legal rulings are always interesting, of course, as you wonder about the impact of them on other decisions. Now, if you wind back a few months, all of us here will remember when Buckinghamshire council did their consultation on changing the parking charges and rates and times. Uh, and I think having read through the report that was produced. Uh, and I think having written through the report that was produced, uh, that went to a committee or cabinet, forget which, uh, in the Shire Council. The result from across the Gandy was a resounding no, don't do this. This is going to damage local economies. And I don't think there was anybody who was in support of these changes from not just parish and town councils, but from the community at large. People, businesses and so on. It was a resounding no. And as we know, of course, the Shire Council, um, decided to go, nah, don't worry about that, we'll do it anyway. So, very similar conditions to what happened in Lambeth. Um, and I just thought it could be interesting just to kind of like throw a small, um, question. We like questions in this town council, um, and to the chief executive of the Shire Council. So, given this ruling and given the response back from the, um, the, the consultation on the parking. What's your assessment as to whether this has any effect at all? And to see what response we get back. This is a long game playing here, but I think it's a question worth asking. And that's what the motion seeks to do is to empower, request and ask our town clerk to shape a suitable response. Suitable letter to the chief executive and then see what happens. So it might take three years or more. Um, to get a response, of course. Um, um, we know about long-term plans. I know about the long-term things. We're still waiting for sort of that. And the route they're going to send there after forty years. So, you know, we learn patience in this town council. Um, but I think it's a question worth asking.
Thank you very much, John. That really, um, helps because I, I'm struggling to. See that the, um, the correlation between the, the two things, but thank you very much for your explanation, councillor Stutchbury.
I was going to thank you for the explanation as well, John. I was struggling after me, what you were going for. Now I, you've explained it, I'm fully behind it. There are other consultations which we could have similar questions like reflex. Um, and, um, and, um, changes to the, um, adult care and social care children's centres. Um, um, where they've ignored the response of the consultation. Um, I don't think we can go into those things. But I think having a response back to this might lead other people to ask similar questions. Especially about other things in the council which are just contentious. So I think it's the right thing to do and democracy should, should be open above borders. If nobody else wants to second it, I'm very happy to second it, but I'm also equally happy for somebody else to.
Thank you, Robin. Anybody else? Rogers? Okay, um, somebody else got any questions, comments? Okay, we'll get to the vote then. All those in favour? And that's unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. Um, and then we move on to item sixteen. Um, which is the motion from councillor Stutchbury, um. Uh, in present, probably brought to a future meeting on any negative or possible negative effect of the government presenting cut. Funding to local neighbourhood plan.
I, I just felt that there was discussion in the council about it and I felt the proper way to do this is to bring back a report. And then discuss the report to see whether there's negatives and positives. What I do know is it doesn't affect. Our neighbourhood plan and the process of our neighbourhood plan. But I do think we need to understand that the ramifications of it. And I think the way to do that is through a considered report. I hope it can just be agreed. And then we can discuss the report and the proper discussion will be about the outcome of that report. Not trying to second guess the report or give an opinion on something based on the evidence that we haven't got yet. This is to get evidence and choose support and not give a timeline on it because we're very much dependent on. What the government's timeline is. So, um, uh, that's how I see it. If we want to discuss personal opinions on it, I could have put them in myself. And I tell you, it's not too because I felt it was inappropriate at this stage.
Okay, councillor Harvey.
Um. I'm not really in favour of the motion and the reason being is it's not a proposal, the government's made a decision. I mean, if you read the now, uh, press release, saying it's a government decision to axe this funding. It's, it's not a proposal. Um, and also as Catherine Stutchbury just pointed out, is that it's not going to affect us. And given that we've asked, you know, through the course of this meeting, I've asked the town clerk and the team to do several other jobs for us. I'm not sure that this is another job that's worth doing because it's not really affecting us directly. I think this is maybe a motion that's as a Lindsay board, something like that, where it will affect parishes who don't have neighbour plans. Or are thinking about it. I don't think it's too lame to this council, so I don't support the, the motion of, you know.
I would agree with councillor Harvey. Um, and I think that given, um. That, that, um, officer currently in pressures of recruiting. Um, we've still, still not, um, managed to get, um, that staple team in place with all the changes that have gone on. Um, I think putting another report in on something which, um. Um, won't affect us anyway, um, is, um, possibly not best suited to go.
I, 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 I think it was valuable to discuss it. I think that's important. And I think that exercised some of the concerns being expressed. So I'm very happy to withdraw the motion. Uh, so we don't need to vote on it. Um, I think it's the sensible thing to do. Um, unless, um, anyone wants to pursue the motion, I think that's the most sensible thing to do in this case because the question's been answered. With the motion we're seeking to attend.
Thank you, Mr Stutchbury. Okay, in that case, we move on to item seventeen. Um, we see the question of course of Buckinghamshire Council, so going to go pick us.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Um. So things are moving forward in some ways in Buckinghamshire Council. We have the first full council meeting of a substantive nature. This coming Wednesday. In the meantime, I have, as I said, the tech committee. And that first one didn't bring very many substantive reports. So, uh, I did get an opportunity to ask about flooding. I didn't get a, uh, an answer that was beyond the report that we already have. I fully intend to keep asking the questions in, uh, varying degrees of detail and various permutations and aspects of it. Again, at every opportunity that I get. Obviously, that is not the only, um, thing that the tech committee concerns itself with. There's a lot of things to be asked. So I'm also always happy to represent residents, you, uh, town council. Though, uh, if you have questions that you would like me to ask, I can't promise I will ask all of them, but I'm very happy to hear them. I also, uh, stood in for a councillor who was away at the recent Health and Social Committee. And, um, that was a very lengthy committee, so we had lots of questions on, um. Actually, it was on the day that the government announced its, uh, changes, uh, to the structure of the N H S. Uh, including the abolition of the Health Watch. Which was something that was raised several times during the committee because Health Watch. Bucks has done, as far as I can see, a really good work in terms of being the voice of patients. So I think that came up, um. So, uh, I'm not going to tell you everything that was done. A, I don't, off the top of my head, can remember all of it. But also it was a very lengthy meeting. So, uh, those are the things that I've been up to in the, uh, in the last few weeks.
Thank you. Any questions for Sir Schaefer? First of Neil.
I'd say it's, um, to thank you for this, this actually doing for Lady in Wall Street, if you've ever missed. So it is hard for me to thank you.
Oh, obviously. Yeah, thank you.
And councillor Stutchbury?
Yeah, um, yeah, I, council kicks off on Wednesday. And we have some notions on the agenda. Nothing like starting, now you mean to go on. Um, um, one motion is on sewage drainage and infrastructure, which I think is something this council's raised endlessly. And one of the reasons for the motion is my sheer frustration and not being able to actually get one of the, um, substantive, um. Developments to discuss this to the council, lot through various means. Um, the other motion is on about, um, members allowances. This is not members allowances, it's additional allowances. What you might not realise is I sit in another place. I get paid a separate amount of money for that. I think it's only right that the public see that. It's only right that there's full accountability of that, so the public can judge. What you're doing, why you're doing it and whether they're getting value for money. I think it's only right. I have been to, um, education select committee, wasn't particularly pleased in response, I've got one. Um, so I put written question in about it to council, um, special education needs. You will know that I pursue it endlessly. Um, I will be going to cabinet tomorrow to question them about special, um, speech therapy stroke, other things tomorrow because, um. Clearly, um, we're not actually hitting the target on that. I'm also going to be going to the Fire Department Executive Meeting. I'm now part of the executive of the Fire Department. Um, how great and wonderful we are. And, um, so I'm sitting on that, and, um. And within that, well, I'm at third meeting next week and strategic stuff. And one of the things I am responsible for, which, um, is the, at least the health and safety of the staff. And one thing I know which I'm very keen to do. And, um, so we'll do that. Many of the things that I'll be following up will be in, there's several written questions if you want to read, um. The agenda when it's published, there are questions in notice on things that I won't get to ask at council. Because they tend to restrict the amount of questions that are asked. As Andy will probably know, it gets quite frustrating as a member that you turn up to a meeting, you're not allowed to ask important questions. But it's early days and I didn't miss the HASS this week. That's the first meeting I've missed at Buckinghamshire Council in, um. My, I've actually been on holiday with my grandchild and that's the only time I've actually missed a meeting. So I won't get my two hundred and something percent. They'll be marked down this time because I've not missed a meeting. Um, but I think I'll make it up. I've already got a bit of work, so, um. We are where we are. Any questions happy to answer, but most of what I'm planning to do will remain in the next two days, so. And I bet Andy will contribute to that in council anyway.
Mister Harvey?
Um, just to say, I had an occasion last week to sit beside the chair of the planning committee. Of a large London borough. And I asked this woman whether they have any restrictions. On, um, people submitting comments on planning applications in their borough. And no, they don't. They might redact perhaps an address or something like that, but they have no restrictions. So I hope that both of our Shire councillors as well, I hope that all three of our Shire councillors, God see, Andy is not here. Um, will at some point chase this down and get us back to where we were a few months ago. And make sure that we can see what's been made by neighbours and other people. Because we well remember, of course, don't we, that when the application was put in for the housing in site J? Was it Q, I guess?
Yeah, I think it was for.
Yeah, um, you know, south of Whiteback. We heard that the developer were filling, was filling up people in distant villages. And then submitting comments on their behalf, as if they were without their knowledge. Now, if those comments are not being put out in public, those people would never have heard, have got to know that was the case. So it's a question that the current arrangement is potentially allowing fraud. Uh, because I think it's fraudulent. It'll be legally fraudulent, but I think there's something wrong with the, with the law that allows this to happen. So I hope that our Shire councillors, both of them are here and Andy is not, will find some way of resolving this.
I actually put in complaints about him share about that. Um, and requested that they actually contact, uh, contact, is every person that had. Um, electrically put in a comment on that particular, um, application to ensure that they, um. They were aware of it and it was actually their, their words there. I don't think anything came of it. Councillor Schaefer?
Now, uh, I have raised, forgive me, I've raised lots of things in lots of different places. I should take, uh, I should take notes of these. Uh, I've raised it at least once, uh, probably twice. So far, nothing going. It will take a while. The case that, uh, thank you for mentioning the site queue case again, that had momentarily slipped. From my, um, attention, but it's a very good argument for why these comments should be visible. Because, um, so, um, yeah, that can reinforce the comments next time. So thank you for raising that again.
Okay, and councillor Stutchbury?
I think this is one of the concerns of the, um, art castle organisation about, um. I can't remember the name of it, it parish, parish, I said. See what's going on. And one of the things that this is doing is, it gives the impression that they're hiding information from the public. And the public pay your bills. So, um, um, why would you be hiding it from the people who pay your bills? And, uh, and it seems like one case or one mistake was the president to correct the whole system. I've not seen, when he, when questioned, I've not seen a substantial answer that makes me feel comfortable about it. Um, it did get questioned at full council bef, some time back. It will continue to be questioned. I think the route to do this is not through council, it'll be through the, um. The audit and governance committee and, and it has to be done, unpicking this charade. Um, and it will take time to unpick it. Um, it, it's going to be unpopular. And when I think the catalysts have come, it's when there's fifteen hundred, um, houses in the green balcony. In South Bucks and, and residents can't see their comics. Um, I can imagine then suddenly there'll be a problem. And, and what, and that's when I think it will, so we wait for the big application in South Bucks and I think that suddenly they'll change their position.
Thank you. And councillor, I don't begin.
Thank you. Somebody, he was phoned up by that company and I took a recording of it. As anything that comes up potentially spam, I record it. And so I do have them on record and exactly what they said.
Okay.
I've, I've recorded name.
No one's got enough tape, Robin.
Eighteen on the agenda, reports from representatives appointed by the council to our bodies. We have nothing, um, I mean, um, in writing, then we've got everything we have. Um, freely, it takes us, we, because you say it down there. I think it's probably something that as we go on, um, the meeting, meeting structures are finding new names. So it will be something, um, as the year goes on, um. Nineteen, climate emergency action plan, to make there are no changes on the, on emergency plan. Councillor Stutchbury?
I was, one of the conversations I was having across Buckinghamshire with other people in other parishes. And other people, and I mentioned the fact that Buckingham Town Council did a climate emergency action plan. And they said, well, what a really good idea. So I don't know whether, I said, well, look at what we're doing. You may want to change it and, and, and do what else. So it is a good thing and it's a work in progress. It's going to be challenging ever with, as you said about climate change. It's going to be amended as we speak, I suppose. So it's, it's been a really good thing.
Um. Item twenty is the action list. Um, councillor Draper?
Um, thank you. Where's it gone? Uh, just a note on, um. The St Rumbles Field green spaces, um, just for awareness and before we talk about the planning as well. Um, we noticed that there was some digging works going on at the bottom of the field. Um, so went down and had a look and, um. It's kind of at the side of the field that backs on to where the old Britannia used to be. Um, so it took a couple of digger drivers. They were told, well, it's too steep and the gardens are flooding, so we're going to dig. But obviously that's, there's no planning for it. There's, it's a sign of archaeological interest. And you don't just dig a hole on top of a drain, on top of an existing drain, which may or may not contain foul water. And, you know, so, um, that's been raised with Buckinghamshire Council and they have now put a stop to the works. Because neither the flood team at Buckinghamshire Council, nor the planning team, nor the archaeological team have been informed of any of these. because neither the flood team at Buckinghamshire Council, nor the planning team, nor the archaeological team have been informed of any of these quite extensive. But they're the big bits of kit that were there digging huge sways out of the ground. So that's now been stopped.
Oh, good.
Councillor Stutford?
I think I'll be seeing the two thirty.
Anything else on the action list? No? Okay, so we move on then to item twenty one, CCLA investment fund to note the additional information received from the CCLA.
Note?
Noted.
Yeah, noted.
Thank you very much. Item twenty two, to receive a list of events presented by the mayor and the deputy mayor.
Noted.
Well done.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Markey. Go to our forum.
I'm going to have to do it.
Item twenty three, chairs announcements. So fringe week is coming up. We're talking the best twenty seventh of July. I am sure that help will be greatly received and support greatly received from councillors. And various different events going on. Please try to go to at least one or two of them. I believe that Zoe will be putting out an email in the next few days asking from us at certain events. Councillor Donkey?
Thank you. And just if I can remember that we've got some ex-councillors who are still happy to volunteer and help out. So.
Okay, that's it. Yeah, I should make sure that it's possible.
Well, it's the same. You just know the tickets are available from TIC, for those who don't know, for some of the events for fringe.
Brilliant. Thank you very much. Okay. So dates of the next meeting, full council Monday the fifteenth of September, interim Monday the thirtieth of October. This is not, this is not full council, so we do not have an interim next and then a full. We don't have a meeting in August, August and October, we suppose.
Always have them. Anyone else know why?
No, the next one's for council, the fifteenth of September, and then interim on the thirteenth of October. I now move that we go into private session.
Agreed.
Okay, and finish this meeting.